Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the council meeting. Today is June 12th and this meeting is now called to order. If I can have everyone stand for the pledge to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gangona?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for May 22nd of 2017.
So moved.
First.
Second.
We have first and the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes have been approved. Next item is the consent agenda and I'd like to obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There are two speaker cards on item number three of the consent.
Okay, I'm sorry. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening, please submit a card and pass it up. As of this time, I've been notified that we do have two cards on items pertaining to the consent agenda. One looks like item number three. I guess they're both for item number three. The other says appointment. I'll give a minute. Is there any other cards that anyone would like to speak to on the items of the consent agenda? Mr. Braxton?
Yes.
Will you be submitting a card regarding one of the consent agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? So with that being said, at this time, I would like to pull item number three on the consent agenda and I am looking for a motion to approve items number two and number four on the consent agenda.
One, two, and four?
And one, two.
I'm sorry, one, two, and four.
So moved.
Second.
First and the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all items on the consent agenda with the exception of item number three
One in favor.
Has been approved.
One in favor.
Oh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. So before moving further on the items for this evening, I'd like to call up, open it up to public comment on the consent agenda items. We have two cards so far. First one is Mr. Bill Lex. Mr. Lex. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, officials. I'm here to urge you to approve the recommendation that Gabriella Maxman be appointed to the Daily City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I think you're all aware of her interest, her passion, her attention to detail in issues affecting Daily City. She's the mother of two daughters. She's very aware of community conditions in terms of pedestrian safety and bicycle access. I think she would be an excellent member and recommend that you approve the recommendation that's come to you from the city committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lex.
All right, good evening, members of the Daily City Council. Tonight I've come to speak on behalf of Gabriella. Gabriella is here in hopes of getting appointed to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. As a member of the community, I would love to see this appointment carried out. Six months ago, I stated in this building, I quoted Jane Jacobs, that cities have the capability of providing something for everyone only when they are created by everyone. In this, one of the most densely populated regions west of the Mississippi, I can't help but believe that the work of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee is incredibly important. A committee working to reduce congestion, strengthen communities, protect the environment, and improve public safety. Gabriella is a doer. She gets things done. If I wanted something done, I would ask Gabriella. If we are looking for a member of our community to roll up her sleeves, work hard, and represent a portion of our community that is not always represented, by all means, appoint Gabriella. She will absolutely give her heart and soul to this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lithgow. All right, the next card I have is Ms. Gabriella Maxman.
Hi, distinguished members of the city council. I'm Gabriella Maxman and I thank you to Bill and Braxton who spoke on my behalf. And I'd also just like to echo that I would love to be part of this committee. I am both a pedestrian in the city as well as a bike rider just today. I, there was somebody doing donuts in front of my daughter's school and I took a picture and I brought it to the police and these are the types of things that I pay attention to as a citizen. And then also, as a cyclist through the city, I have a lot of perspective about what we could be doing better and I'd love to be able to help support initiatives in order to bring that on. I'm also very active and fitness is really probably my number one priority in conjunction with being a mother and I would love to be able to bring that passion to this committee as well. So I really hope that you will appoint me to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxman. All right, I don't have any other further cards, so item number...
If I could...
Item number three for approving appointments to the Daily City Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, Advisory Committee, and then I'll take discussion once we get a motion.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of those listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Buena Ventura?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, there was another member that is on our list to be approved. Her name is Andrea Wilcox and she's in the audience today.
Oh, where is she?
I wanted you to see her and acknowledge her. She's someone that has been very active in terms of providing insight into the community. I've spoken with her in the past and I think she comes with a lot of really good ideas and I'm really excited to see her come on board. I don't know the other gentleman, Mr. Is he here, Mr. Mark? I know Clayton. I know Clayton. Clayton also.
He's not for...
Okay. What's your name again?
Danielle Greenwood.
Danielle. I don't know you, so, but I also wanted to make sure you guys are recognized and we look forward to having you serve and becoming a part of the city. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, next item on the agenda is public hearings and item number five, a notice of lien and special assessment to rental property. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Chu. Good evening, Mr. Chu.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember. Daily City municipal code require all commercial and residential property owner to pay business license rental property test based on the gross rental income. The first notice was sent to the past still rental property owner in August 2016. The second notice was sent out in January 2017. And the final notice was sent to the past still property owner in May 2017. The notice provided the property owner the opportunity to pay the past still business license test. All the unpaid business license tests will be accessed on the fiscal year 2018 property test bill. There are around 3,000 rental property business license in Daily City. The attachment in the staff report include 321 rental property or 10% of the total rental property business license that did not respond to the free notice that the city sent out. In addition, the city is working with an outside consultant to identify any property owner who ran out property in Daily City but without a business license. The consultant identified five potential rental property without a business license and the five properties include in the attachment that I sent to the council. And staff recommend the city council approve the notice of lien and special assessment to the real property. I'm happy should I answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Do we have any comments from council?
Yes. I had asked earlier, but I think people out in the audience might want to know. So the landlords that we're dealing with tonight are the non-compliant ones.
Yes.
The vast majority of people have paid their business license and their business tax.
Yes, that statement is correct. About 90% of the property tax owner they comprise with the city municipal code and only 10% of 321 owner they did not respond to the free notice that the city sent out.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Mr. Chu, according to the information I read, this will bring us in about $141,000?
Yes.
All right. Well, there's no other further comments on the council at this time. I'd like to open up the meeting to the public if any. I don't have any cards on this, but at least I state it for the record. Hearing and seeing no cards on this particular subject, I would request a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Move to close.
First. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public, oh, say aye?
Aye.
Do it. Okay, this is just to close the public. So therefore, moving on to recommended action, and that is to adopt the resolution for a notice of lien and special assessment to rental property, may I have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, the next item is communications, Public Works Department reorganiz... Thank you, Mr. Chu. Reorganization and proposed staffing changes and we have staff, Mr. Fuller. Oh, Ms. Martell, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, tonight, this first item of two has to do with reorganization that has taken place in the Public Works Department and requests that the council approve some changes in classifications and compensation to align with the reorganization. Just by way of history, the Public Works Department in the city has been subject to reorganization probably about three times now since Mr. Full...
Since I've come.
Since Mr. Fuller was hired back in 2009, I believe it was. And at that time, we were in the midst of the recession and one of the things that very much resulted in my selecting Mr. Fuller for, to fill the Public Works Director position at the time was his willingness to reexamine the way that Public Works was delivered in the city and to consider a consolidation of services in the Public Works Department. And so at that time, we actually moved Parks Maintenance out of what was then the Parks and Recreation Department when we consolidated Libraries and Recreation. And Parks Maintenance was put into Public Works in order to have all of the maintenance activities rest in one department and have consistent management and oversight of all of the maintenance functions for the parks, for buildings, for streets, for all of the various maintenance activities. At the same time, we also reorganized then and took fleet maintenance out of the Finance and Administrative Services Department and also put that into Public Works because we felt that consolidating the management at our Corporation Yard with all of the field services and fleet maintenance and putting it under the management of the Public Works Department made sense in terms of efficiency, effectiveness, and so as a result of those consolidations, we saved quite a bit of money in that reorganization at the time and reclassified a number of positions that even though the positions got somewhat of an increase, we had an overall salary savings that resulted from that reorganization. Well, we're now faced with the same situation because Mr. Fuller indicated to us not quite a year ago that he was planning to retire in the future and the future is getting sooner and sooner becoming a reality. So we took that opportunity to again look at his department and see if there were opportunities for us to reorganize and to realign positions that would better result in the delivery of cost-effective and efficient services. At the same time, we had been without an Assistant Director of Public Works and a city engineer, which I thought were critical pieces, particularly the Assistant Director, was a critical piece of our succession plan, to have someone in place before Mr. Fuller retired so that they could work collaboratively and that would then make that particular position a very viable candidate to be considered to fill the Director position at the time that Mr. Fuller actually retires. And so with that in mind, we've examined a number of different positions and changes in classifications that would help to better align the staffing resources we have without adding any new positions, but that would redistribute the workload and allow us to actually eliminate a couple of positions and then to compensate those employees who would take on additional responsibilities with just a small bump in compensation. So I'm going to let Mr. Fuller identify those positions and why it has made sense for us to reorganize in this way.
Mayor and councilmembers, the most important position out of all the ones that we're recommending is the Corporation Yard Superintendent. At the, at the time I first came to the city, after about a year, we were in the midst of the recession. In order to do our part, there were some retirements and we reorganized at that time and we eliminated one of our superintendent positions and we had just building maintenance and street maintenance under a single superintendent. As Ms. Martell has said, since that time, though, the operations of the Corporation Yard have expanded significantly in that we took on fleet maintenance from the Finance Department, we took on park maintenance from the old Park and Recreation Department for consolidating with the library. And the reality is, our Corporation Yard Superintendent is really operating like an Assistant Director or Assistant to the Director or Deputy Director type position. Approximately 80% of the employees in our department report to that position right now. And in my opinion, he's improperly classified and vastly underpaid for his service to the city. In order, I think to properly position this department upon my retirement and some changes that'll happen at the city engineer and Assistant Director level, I believe it's important to reclassify our current superintendent to the position of Assistant to the Director of Public Works with a appropriate increase in salary. That particular individual not only has taken on about 30% more staff over the years since he was made Superintendent, he's basically, his responsibilities have increased about 50%, well, almost like 100%. It's almost a 100% increase in total responsibility for that position, partly because of our, the fleet and the park maintenance, but also because of increasing stormwater compliance efforts that we're doing at the Corporation Yard. And also, he's been a vital player in helping to develop our asset management system, which will be going online in a couple of months and provide us much more information that we need in order to properly manage our assets and spend our limited funds in the right place to get the best bang for the buck. So for that position, I completely recommend that that position be reclassified to an Assistant to the Director position with a commensurate salary increase. Another position that has become vital to our department over the years since we've been taking on all these new duties is our Administrative Analyst position. Currently, we have an Administrative Analyst who has assumed a leadership role and responsibility for the management of the city's capital improvement program, which was formerly essentially run by the Deputy Finance Director in the Finance Department, Mike Wilson, before he retired. And that role and those duties came over our department and our analysts essentially took on those duties. In addition to that, our analyst is taking on the overall citywide management organization or project management of our MPDS Municipal Regional Permit Compliance Program from the Manager of Technical Services in Department of Water, Wastewater Resources, since that position's been empty for about a year now. And again, just like the...
Through retirement.
Yeah. Yes. And just like the position of the Superintendent, the Corporation Yard, this individual has taken on significant new duties that were done by people that were compensated significantly higher than she's currently compensated. So our recommendation is to elevate her position from just a Management Analyst to a Senior Management Analyst with the appropriate raise in salary that goes along with that. The other, third position that we feel desperately needs to be recognized for the role that that person is playing is our Geographic Information Systems Analyst or GIS Analyst. The bottom line is that our GIS Analyst has been with the city for some, for many years, longer than I've been here, 15 or plus years with the city. And his position is very unique within our organization. It's like a tech position, it's like a computer program type of thing, but it's very specialized. And we're very lucky to have this individual in order to run our program. Because we're not that large a city, it's very difficult to have any kind of internal backup for that person because his job is so specialized. So without him, we're kind of deaf, dumb, and blind on all of our mapping and geographic information stuff and he's significantly paid below what the market would require for a position of that type. In addition to that, our GIS Analyst also stepped up and took over a lot of the responsibilities for new and emerging stormwater compliance efforts for trash reduction, which are very much map-based and geographic land area-based compliance programs and monitoring. And without him, we probably would not be in compliance. There's about, I don't know, I think eight cities in our county right now that are at risk of not being in compliance on their trash elimination program. We're not one of them. And I think our analyst is one of the reasons why because that's not really something that was in his bailiwick, it's not in his job description to actually do that work, but at one time when we had no analyst and I had no one to do it, I asked him if he'd step up and take over that work and he has and he's doing such a good job, well, I've never tried to take it away from him. In addition to that, our new asset management system, without this individual, our new asset management system simply would not function. It is so based on where a pipe is in the ground or where a building is located that the information in our asset management system is all linked into our geographic information system. And he, matter of fact, he had so much work to do to bring that program up and online, he was doing as much work as our consultants were doing and they had, sometimes they were afraid that he was going to fall behind. Fortunately for us, he didn't. He's a very dedicated employee. But I feel very strongly that this employee needs to have his salary adjusted to be commensurate not only with these duties here, but with the marketplace because the real risk we have is that he might go somewhere else and we will literally be deaf, dumb, and blind without him and we will have to raise our salaries anyway in order to try to get somebody to replace him if he does go.
In fact, I might add that all of the positions that Mr. Fuller has outlined for you are in very high demand. And in fact, our Management Analyst was being lured away from Daily City to Redwood City to the senior level position that we are wanting to reclassify her to here so that we can keep her. And even though she lives in Redwood City and it would be closer for her to work there, she would like very much to stay in Daily City. So this offers us an opportunity, not just for the Management Analyst, but for all of them. Our Superintendent especially has been recruited many times to go to other cities, so...
He turned down a job for the city, us, one of our cities literally right next door to us.
Yeah. So all of these positions are very much in demand in order for us to remain competitive and to acknowledge the loyalty of the incumbents in every single one of those positions who have stayed with the hope that at some point we would reclassify them and offer them an adjustment in compensation. And so tonight, we're asking the council to consider the proposed changes in staffing, classifications, and compensation adjustments, which I'll also ask Mr. Fuller to explain to you that the overall fiscal impact of all of the changes is really de minimis because... Why don't you go ahead and explain, John?
Okay. The, as I think you all know, but I'm going to reiterate it a little bit here, just for the benefit of the audience, there are some departments, the Water, Wastewater Department is actually the best example, where they have very little impact, if any, on the general fund. They work on sewers and they work on water and it's the water rates and the sewer rates that pay for them. So they don't compete with any other operation in the city for the expenditure of general funds because general funds are not used to operate them. Public Works is probably the next closest department to Water, Wastewater that lives on non-general fund money. We live on gas tax, Measure 8 funds, AB 1600 funds, Parkland dedication fees, grants, fees for permits, to the point that of our $15 million budget, there's only about $2.5 to $3 million that's general fund. So over $10 million of our budget is some other kind of money and it can't be used for any other thing than the things that these employees are working on. And so the one position I didn't mention was our Traffic Engineer. Our Traffic Engineer in today's marketplace is typically paid and compensated by other agencies at the Senior Engineer salary range. Our Traffic Engineer is currently being compensated at the lower Associate Engineer salary range and has been for about 10 years now and I think she's vastly underpaid. And her knowledge of the city and review of ERs and for development impact type stuff is vital to us performing our duties well and she would also be somebody, if she happened to leave, would be almost impossible to replace. City of South San Francisco is looking for somebody just like her right now and they'll pay senior salary for her. So, you know, I'm personally getting ready to leave, so what do I care? I care because I care about Daily City and I think if we don't do what we can to hold onto some of these very... Their employees, they're very dedicated to the city, have a lot of long-term knowledge of the city, which allows them to do their jobs better than any replacement employee would be able to do for many years until they gain that same knowledge. I want to see the city retain those people because I think it would be really a travesty if we lost them because we would not be able to operate as efficiently as we are now. But because almost all of these would result in increased compensation for the four employees involved, there would be a net increase in the Public Works Department budget of about $80,000, $43,000 in salary and about $37,000 a year in increased benefits. However, it's almost no impact on the general fund because we are compensated out of other sources. And matter of fact, what we would do immediately if these recommendations are implemented is because our analyst, if she moves to Senior Analyst and becomes involved, more heavily involved in capital projects, which she to some degree is now, but she'll actually manage some capital projects that don't involve engineering like working with a consultant to develop our new Park Master... to develop our new park master plan, and helping our Traffic Engineer with Bicycle-Bedestrian Master Plan, which we got a grant for, and some other projects, that we can transfer her from the general fund, Fund One, to the General Capital Fund, which is Fund Thirty-One, where we basically recapture her a hundred percent of her salary. Her total salary package with fringe benefits and everything is about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So, if we implement this entire plan, even though the overall operating department budget would go up by eighty thousand dollars, we'd cut the impact on the general fund by a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, so we'd actually reduce the impact on the general fund by about seventy-five thousand dollars. In total, I think this is something that would be vital to keep this department running well, once I retire, and some of the long-term impacts of this will also figure into, once I do retire, and some of the changes we made in the Engineering Department with the downgrading and upgrading some positions there as well, that will make this entire package, I think, something that will be good for the department for like the next decade. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, before we respond to any questions, I just really want to acknowledge, as I did in my opening remarks, from the very moment that I hired Mr. Fuller back in 2009, up to and including now, as he is approaching the sunset of his career here in Daly City, he has worked very, very closely and collaboratively with me to make the Public Works Department, I think, the strongest that it has ever been. And I've been here for about, almost twenty years, and there were some times when Public Works just didn't function at the level that it does today. There's been dramatic changes, dramatic improvements, and I attribute it in part to his leadership for all the changes that have been required, and that he has implemented extremely well and produced great results, as well as the loyalty of his staff and their willingness to take whatever changes were presented to them, and take on new tasks and responsibilities to serve the public the best way that we can. And I think that that has contributed to making our Public Works Department the strongest it's been for a very, very long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martel and Mr. Fuller. At this particular time, I would like to open up for comments, discussion amongst the dais, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fuller, for your dedication to Daly City, and really taking a thoughtful approach around succession planning, and, you know, your foresight around what needs to be done for our city. I do have one question. I know you mentioned with the GIS Analyst, and, you know, they have that knowledge, and if we were to lose that position, I was just wondering, just in that realm, have we thought about kind of making sure that institutional knowledge? I know we're retaining them, I know we want to, you know, acknowledge their work and really keep them on board, but I'm just thinking, maybe like further down the line, around these situations that you've talked about, around all of these valuable people, which is, thank you, if you're listening out there, for all the work you've done, we just, I just want to see kind of what is the plans in succession, or in making sure that that valuable information and knowledge has, you know, some sort of, I think, if it's information, how do we make sure we have that with the city, or if it's training the next person?
Because of the nature of this particular person's position, there's almost no one in the Public Works Department that could be trained to take, to try to follow in this person's footsteps, because there, it's a very much specialized computer-type of operation. But we have talked about potentially transitioning this person over and putting him in the Information Systems Group, where he's working with other, pardon me, computer geeks, who are much closer related to the kind of work he does, and can in fact do some cross-training, and if not taking over his position, can help, let's say, hold the fort while we got somebody new to take his place. But, and I've talked to that employee also, about the potential of him moving over to the Information Systems Group as a different place to put him, so that he could do some mentoring and cross-training with some of the other ISD staff. But that's another reason why I think it's really important that we raise the salary, because most of the ISD staff make more money than he does. And I think it would be really tough for somebody getting paid less money to be training somebody to do his job when he gets paid more money.
So, we will be looking at that position. We're looking at doing a master plan for all of our information systems and technology, and bringing in potentially, we've had a vacancy in that department for the manager, we're looking at recruiting for a Chief Information Officer, that will allow us to expand our view of technology and the various applications, and then also to do a master plan for technology throughout the city. That would be a long-term master plan for where we want to get in terms of all of our information systems. And at that point in time, we would look at incorporating the GIS staff position into Information Systems Division.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, lightly?
You know, John, it's a great, great job, as usual, you know, and I do remember in 2009, when you were hired, and they were told to exactly do exactly what you're doing right now. What comes to mind is, is that what you described in your presentation was how someone grows into a job, and how a job description grows around that person.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you remember, I believe we had a guy that was in charge of procurement, I think. Do you remember, we had somebody that after that person retired, we just got rid of that job? It was something along those lines. And if you've been here long enough, you actually get to see that happen in a, in an organization. And it's interesting, when the changes come from just the job that's being done, and your observations. And it's only because of the fact that you've been here since 2009, you've had an opportunity to work with these people, you've seen the way they work, you've seen how their job description has evolved over time, and, you know, there's no one that could have that unique perspective other than you, and that's, that kind of institutional memory, we're going to really lose.
Well, I think that there are some people, for example, our current Superintendent, who has that same kind of eye to the future. And I think it's relevant when you talk about how different things morph over time. I mean, at one time, the best thing for us to do was to take two Superintendents and eliminate one, when there was a retirement. And so, we went down to one Superintendent. Now, I'm telling you, give that Superintendent a raise, because he's doing a hundred percent more work than he was doing back then. So, you know, conditions are always evolving and changing, not over weeks and months, or even a few years, but over a decade, yeah, they change very, they change a lot.
I also think what's interesting to note is, is that because of your, you have an enterprise-type fund, and because of the fact that you have some other funds to call upon-
A lot, a whole basket full of them.
Look, it's not so much creative financing, it's just being able to know that I can take over here and not impact this. And, you know, that's invaluable. And to have that kind of insight, thank you to the City Manager, thank you to you, I'm all for this, I think it's something that we should be doing in every one of our departments. And I think the next item is going to talk a little bit about something like that.
Same thing, yes. And there's one other thing that's going to be changing in the near future too, and that is that with the passage of, is it AB-1 or SB-1, I can't remember, but the new statewide gas tax, the amount of money we get from gasoline tax is going to almost double, which means we're going to be getting about two and a half million dollars more by 2019, which means we're going to be able to do a lot more projects. And because our streets are in really good shape, our pavement's in good shape, because our pavement management score is above eighty, we don't have to spend it on pavement, because our pavements are already good. So, that means we can spend it on other things, like median island maintenance, and redoing the landscaping in our median islands, putting in bio swales like we're doing up on John Daly right now, because we have a new requirement to do, or mandate to do, to do green infrastructure projects, which will allow us to kind of kill two birds with one stone, and we'll have more capital projects a year or two from now than we have now, because of a dedicated funding source from increased gas tax. So, I think the changes that we're making in engineering, and the changes that we're proposing to make in the Corporation Yard are all things that'll serve us better when that future comes.
How about it?
Yeah, quick comment, for those of you who go, what do you mean the streets are great? Have you driven down Mission Street? Mission Street does not belong to the city, it's a state highway. And they need to fill every single one of those potholes, and in fact, we cannot touch Mission Street.
Not without a permit.
Oh, yeah, and getting a permit from Caltrans, what's that take, about ten years, I think?
For something, if we were fixing their problems for us, they'd probably get it for us quickly.
So, are we waiting for an emotion?
I still, we're still in discussion at this time, from the Council. Anybody else have any additional they would like to bring up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
John, I wanted to ask you about the, one of the things you brought on, which I think is a wonderful program, is the Daly City iHelp app. And I wanted to know, well, first, if you could, I'll just throw out my questions. If you could walk me through how, I think I understand basically how it works, but I don't understand if it's a human-to-human kind of supervision over the iHelp program, or is it an algorithm that the computer sort of generates where, which direction it goes to in terms of solving the problem? I also wanted to know if this movement in the, the staff, is that going to have any impact on the iHelp system we have? And is there a specific person that's in charge of the iHelp program? And what, where's the funding that we have for the iHelp program? So, if a complaint comes in, I'll be where it goes from there.
Okay. When a complaint comes into the iHelp system, it's basically equivalent to an email, but it's not, it goes into a database in the iHelp system. The person who sent it in, if they provide, they don't have to, because some people want to put in their request or complaint anonymously, and they can do that. But if they do provide us with an email address, they will get a response that says, think we're using the iHelp system, we've got it, so they have an acknowledgement that their request has been received. What the, what the iHelp system then does, is it routes that request based on the request type, because the person who puts it in can just select from a short list of pre-selected complaint types that we get a lot of, like illegal dumping, or a street light out, or a pothole. It will automatically be directed to the person who actually handles that, it'll come into them as an email, so that it's, it can be responded to as promptly as possible. But in addition to that, I get every one of them, I get a duplicate message, so does our Corporation Yard Superintendent person, he gets a duplicate one. So, in case somebody's on vacation, that person that's on vacation can actually assign somebody to take his request for him, like a subordinate. But it also means that we're seeing them, so if we know that person's on vacation, we will get, we will see them. And so, there, most of them, I would say probably ninety percent of the requests that come into the Public Works Department are handled probably within forty-eight hours, whatever it is. There are sometimes people request things that would require actually us to create a capital project to do it, like, why don't you fix, you know, blah, blah, park, it needs a new tot lot, or whatever. That will get a response typically from me or the Analyst in our department. Actually, when you say, is there somebody who's actually in charge of it, there are multiple people who oversee it to make sure that the complaints are routinely addressed, and that there aren't any ones that kind of get misplaced and lost in the system. But our Analyst, that we're recommending be promoted to Senior Analyst, she's actually the overall administrator, so that program is actually hosted off-site by a vendor, and called Public Stuff, or they used to be called Public Stuff, they got bought by some other company called Exela. But if they change something in that program, because they have multiple customers using it, multiple agencies using it, they might tweak it somehow, and the system doesn't quite act like it used to. She's the one who will interface with our outside vendor to make sure that we're educated on any subtle changes that might affect how we respond to complaints. But, so, there's a lot of human oversight to make sure nothing gets missed or slipped, but the system itself generates a response when requests come in. And then, any request that does come in has to be closed. And when it's closed, there's a description of what was done with that complaint, and that also gets sent to the person if they gave us an email. Our biggest frustration is when somebody, for example, complains about a pothole on Highway Thirty-Five or on Mission Street, and we want to tell them, that's not us, that's Caltrans, and they don't give us an email address, so we can't tell them, and so they keep complaining about the pothole, and they're not getting, there's no way for us to get back to them, to tell them it's not us.
But would you take it a step further, and then tell Caltrans? Or do they have-
For potholes, we routinely do, because Caltrans has their own website system, it's way more complicated, and it's only for highway problems, and probably most of the general public has no idea that it exists. In our responses, where we do have an email address, and we can give somebody a response, what we give them is the phone number of the local maintenance yard, and we give them that email address and tell them that's where they need to complain, because our, actually our supervisor in the Street Maintenance Division, if there's a, if he gets multiple complaints about a certain pothole or whatever, he will make sure to actually put in the request for the people that are complaining to us. But once he's done it, he won't do it again, and again, and again. We may get five complaints about a Caltrans pothole, once we know we've put it in the Caltrans system, we don't, we don't continue to complain to Caltrans.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a few quick comments, I'll talk very fast, because we need to move on. Thank you for the information on iHelp, I've used it many times. Apparently, when I came on board, folks start calling me, what about this, what about that? And I learned a lot from the iHelp, especially in the orientation that you provided when I came on board, to actually see how the system worked and how you track everything. And we constantly tell folks about iHelp, including today, where our City Manager, Ms. Martel, when we had folks from TR Polisita here, sitting where the folks are out there in the audience, and she's telling the kids, do you know about our iHelp? Well, if you see your mom and dad, and if you see something, you can report it, take a picture and report it. And I found that to be definitely commendable. I see Christine Fuller sitting out there in the audience, and in your issue about whether it's owned by the state, her and I made a complaint to Caltrans regarding the potholes at Planet Fitness when you get on the freeway there. Have you noticed that's been fixed?
Yeah.
So, you got to take that initiative to report it to Caltrans, if anything, if you get a flat tire, you file a claim with Caltrans to get your flat fixed, or-
And if you don't mind, I would like to say for the audience, the bigger audience out there, is that it's better for citizens to complain to Caltrans than ask us to complain to Caltrans, because it's easier for Caltrans to ignore staff from another agency than it is for them to ignore the general public.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. And on SB-1, for the fixing of the pavements, Daly City's supposed to get four-point-five million. And, okay, Mission Potholes. Lastly, I want to say, Mr. Fuller, in meeting you, I wish I was back here in 2009, when you first came aboard, because when I first met you, and you explained everything to me, and culminating with what you said today, a true sign of a good boss is when he or she will put forth the effort, effort, and to try to gain the equity of our employees who work for Daly City, especially if they definitely deserve that. And you have definitely brought that with the assistance of our City Manager, Ms. Martel, to say, hey, you know, we're doing something, we might lose this person, so a confused mind will always say no. But your presentation this evening makes an easy answer for me as we were about to move forward. So, thank you so much, sir, job well done. All right, is there anything further on the dais?
No.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Public Works Department reorganization and proposed staffing changes.
So moved.
Second.
First and the second, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Yes.
Mr. Buendaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
I'd really like to thank you for that, because I think you just made a great investment in the future of Daly City.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is Water and Waste Water Resources, Department Reorganization and Proposed Staffing Changes, and we have Mr. Sweetland and Ms. Martel. Good evening, Mr. Sweetland.
Ms. Mayor and Council, this is the second item that I referred to earlier, that in substance is very similar to the previous item, in that due to the retirement last year of one of our Managers in Water and Waste Water, Mr. Sweetland and I sat down and took a look at his department, and tried to identify a number of opportunities that would- and tried to identify a number of opportunities that would provide for positive succession planning by redistributing the responsibilities of the former manager of technical services, and create an opportunity for several employees to be able to take on new job responsibilities, learn new skills, and in so doing, prepare themselves for future advancement in the department. And so after some discussions with Mr. Sweetland and with his leadership team in his department, he came forward with a plan that we discussed that would create that succession planning opportunity for us in his department, which I might also add, where there are difficult positions to fill in Public Works, such as the ones we identified, the positions in Mr. Sweetland's department are about 10 times more difficult to fill, because there just aren't a lot of people with the technical skills in the Water and Wastewater fields that, that we had in years past. People just are not going into this profession as, as frequently as we've seen in the past. And so for many years, working with Mr. Sweetland, since he became the department head in Water and Wastewater Resources, we have done a number of things to create opportunities for entry-level employees to gain more skills, advance in the department, do cross-training so they could do water or wastewater operations, and just to expand the opportunities that we have to really home-grow our more senior-level staff. And so we've been pretty successful in, in keeping a good number of our staff that if we had had them leave prematurely to move to other positions, that it would be very difficult for us to fill those positions with all the other wastewater agencies that we compete with. So in alignment with what we were doing in Public Works, the same is being proposed tonight, that you consider some reclasses and some compensation adjustments. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sweetland to outline those for you.
Honorable Mayor, Mr. City Council, good evening. I'm not going to belabor the points that were raised earlier with the same reorganization in my brother department in Public Works, but the same situation is here in Water, Wastewater Resources. And I think to the community's benefit and to the management of our city manager, we have opportunities to allow competent staff, competent incumbents to take on greater responsibilities. We certainly take a hard look at that. Pat had mentioned the difficulties we've encountered over historically with the flexible staffing, the compensation, the way in which we pretty much pioneered the FlexUp program within incumbent staff to give them the opportunities to grow. The retirement of the manager of technical services from a year ago provides an opportunity in which you had mentioned from the Public Works presentation, some of the shedding of responsibilities that the manager of technical services had performed. There's an opportunity with current incumbent staff, the source control inspector, as well as our operations technician, to take on some of the roles that were fulfilled by the manager of technical services with retirement, consistent with the expanded role, the expanded capacity, and working with human resources to find the right compensation package that's equivalent to that. You're never going to find the, across the board, but I think this whole process within the department has been marked by very good faith discussions between employees and the managers to come up with the right mix of duty statement, the right mix of responsibility, and the right mix of what that salary will end up being, to be competitive. And as I had mentioned and had congratulated the human resources, city manager, and this council, retain also the incentive program for incentive credits for having the certifications within the technical side, and to honor that moving it forward. The individuals that are involved here are among the best, among the best in this organization. I say that unequivocally and without any hesitation. When you look at the work that goes on to eliminate the, the source control and source control inspection, the individual incumbent has been desirous of additional capacities because he possesses those capacities. And the regulatory side, regulatory compliance, regulatory advocacy is certainly well within the workload that he's capable of performing. The other individual from the manager, excuse me, from the operations technician with regard to project development coordinator, that role has evolved over time from just inspection of pipes in the ground to how those pipes in the ground affect the ability to serve the community with new developments as they come in, and how we monitor those new developments, and how we bring those developments into compliance, and how we're looking at trying to achieve the best for the, you know, organization, as well as the community, as these developments, as well as the capital improvement program that goes on. So these are expanded roles and responsibilities that used to be performed within the manager of technical services, and now can be absorbed by existing incumbents as set forth in the memorandum that, that we have prepared. And in addition to that, with the, with the elimination of the program, there's obviously some savings to the enterprise fund that we're certainly fully capable of, you know, certainly as the bonus of everything involved here. It's not only a development to staff and the expanded capacities and ability to do more for the community, adding to the effectiveness, adding to the efficiency, but there are some real cost savings involved as a result. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Sweetland. Any comments from council?
I was just curious. So what generally happens in, in, in the market for water wastewater-type employment when there's a drought? Is it, does it? I'm curious about, is the demand higher for these kind of employees? Because you have more to do, or is it because you have more problems to solve? Is it generally when there's an increase in, when there's no drought? I'm just curious. What is the market for that?
As the city manager pointed out, we're in a tough market. We're the city of Daily City, we're surrounded by large public utility agencies, you know, San Francisco, Santa Clara Valley, Contra Costa, East Bay Mud. The drought is just a climate condition. You know, there's still pipes in the ground, drought or no drought. There's still tanks that store water, drought or no drought. There are wells that produce groundwater, drought or no drought. So there really isn't any sort of expansion, other than, as Ms. Martel pointed out, not a lot of people coming in to the profession. And with that, it does make it very, very thin, where we've had a lot of people go to do other work for other, you know, utility agencies, get paid a whole lot more and do a whole lot less. So it's really not drought, that's just, that's just the climate aspect. But what we're really dealing with is just not a lot of people coming in from behind. So the ones that we do get, we have been striving to home-grow them and keep them here.
And drought or no drought, we still flush the toilet occasionally.
That too.
It doesn't stop.
Thank you. I don't have any more. I, I won't comment on anything, but thank you so much, Mr. Fuller and Ms. Martel. So we don't have any cards on this?
Little approval?
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, may I have a roll call, please, to adopt a resolution for Water and Wastewater Resources Development, Reorganization and Proposed Staffing Changes? Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Sweetland and Ms. Martel. All right, next item is number eight. This is the second reading on ordinance number 1414, Establishing Planned Development Zoning Standards, PD-70. And I'll turn it over to our assistant city attorney, Ms. Kellis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
This item.
Sorry. This item came up for introduction and first reading at the last regularly scheduled meeting, and is now up for adoption. It's regarding planned development standards, PD 70. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. All right.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, first and second?
I just have a comment. Those of us here know what piece of land this is about.
I was going to comment too.
But when I used to be out there, one of my number-one complaints was, a member of the public who gets the agenda has no idea where this piece of property is.
Yeah.
So can we, in the future, always give a short description of where the property is located? Because PD 70 doesn't mean anything to most people.
Certainly won't.
One pager, yeah, you're right, it doesn't say anything.
No, no, it's just literally a sentence.
Right, it includes all the APNs.
It's off of this street between here and here.
Yeah.
Because you say how many acres it is.
Right, just for clarification, it's the Carter Martin project over.
So can you explain it now, where the location is?
It's the Carter Martin project. It's a, it's quite a lot of, there's probably 25 APNs, it includes a very large project.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. And if I can also add, 29 owners got together. This was a project that took 12 years to bring it to fruition, and it's 117 units in the area of Carter and Geneva.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much. All right, next item is public appearances. Is all I got is three cards? It's okay, it's all right.
Get home before the news.
Okay, great.
That's the score, by the way.
All right. We'll start off with, it's Ronnie Miller and Dre Montano, Montano. Come on up, please. Welcome. Good to see you folks.
Thank you, good evening.
Again.
Again.
Yes.
As a volunteer with the American Cancer Society, I publicly want to thank our mayor, many members of the police department, and Mr. Sweetland for attending our fundraiser at Celia's last week. It was heartwarming to know that our local government is behind us and helping us with the cause, and encouraging us to work even harder to rid this dreaded disease. That being said, we have another function coming up, and I'll turn that over to Dre. Again, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Dre Montano. I'm the online social media lead for Relay for Life North San Antonio County, which covers San Bruno, Daily City, and South San Francisco. I'm also the team captain for Daily City Fog Cutters, and on the planning committee for the Daily City Fog Cutters Car Show and Shine. Our relay was April 29th and 30th, and although the relay has ended, our season ends July 31st. We've met our goal, and we're in fact $6,000 over our goal, but we're not stopping. We're still going to raise money to find a cure and support our community and support survivors like myself. Our event is to raise money and to bridge the gap between old-school muscle cars and classic cars and new-school import cars. We're charging a registration fee of $25 for cars to enter the car show. We'll have entertainment, we have assistance from the Daily City Explorers to help with the Honor Guard, we have assistance from the Veterans of Foreign War for the National Anthem. I'm also part of the auxiliary. Our auxiliary will be there on-site as well. We have a full agenda of face painting for the kids, music, we'll have food. And we're also going to have a ceremony to incorporate survivors, those that are fighting cancer, and honor those that have lost their battle. We've had great support from our own community, we've reached out to the Daily City businesses, and I'm overwhelmed with the amount of people that want to be a part of this. So we're here to invite you folks out. It's July 8th, Saturday, we've left flyers, we're on social media, we posted on the Chamber of Commerce, Daily City Police Department, Jefferson High School, we're on Instagram, we're on Twitter. So we're, we're out there, and thank you for having us, and I hope we look forward to seeing you at our car show.
I have a question.
Thank you, Dre.
You told us the date, but what are the hours and exactly where?
It'll be at Jefferson High School in the upper lot, and the cars will roll in at 9:00. The vendors will roll in at 10:00, and the show will start at 11:00. We'll do the ceremony, raffles and trophies at 4:00, and the show will end at 5:00.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Dre? All right, thank you so much, and it was a pleasure to be out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next card I have is Mr. Bill Stepanovich.
I'm Bill Stepanovich with the FARC, and I'm here to give official response from FARC, in particular, comments made by Judith Christensen about the transfer. And this is a letter that we drafted. If we heard your official remarks from the dais correctly on Monday night, May 22nd, 2017, from FRAC asking during the public appearances, then we believe that you made an unfortunate misstatement. Franciscan Park residents in attendance understood you to assert that the outstanding bonds must be refinanced before the transfer of the property to new ownership can be approved. A, no such requirement appears anywhere in the settlement agreement or subsequent court order. B, all 500 resident homeowners in the Franciscan continuously cover bond debts dealt installment timely, fully, and without fail, beginning from 2002 to the present. C, during, considering this perfect record of spotless financial responsibility, there's absolutely no responsible bias for utterly unfounded assumption that they're right suddenly and inconceivably default on these bond payments in the future. D, furthermore, Link Housing Limited Partners already transferred the park by deeding its ownership to Franciscan Park LLC in 2007, which was owned fully by Corporate Fund for Housing. This prior transfer in 2007 was executed by the silent approval of the Daily City government officials, but without any knowledge of the Franciscan residents. Therefore, we would hope that you simply misspoke during your response to these questions, and that you will subsequently correct or publicize misconception prior to the study session. And two, our lawyer has filed papers, and a post-judgment status conference will be held on September 26th in State Superior Court, Department 7, since the court order, the settlement was issued in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stepanovich. All right, I have one more, I have one more card, and that is for Mr. Giovanni Guaj, Guaj, Nini. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, hello, everybody.
Lift the microphone up, I'll get here.
Sorry.
Three minutes.
I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Did you put a blindfold on and walk with a blind man stick like I asked you six weeks ago? Did you do it?
Well, is this, this is not a debate, this is a public.
I'm asking because I used to walk like you five years ago. Now I got MS, I'm in a wheelchair. I deal with all the curb cuts. I can, I have pictures of a curb cut in front of my house where the pitch is backwards, and it's always full of dirt and debris. Already replaced one carpet. Does the city want the receipt for my carpet being replaced? What about the curb cuts on Belcrest and Longview? You only have curb cuts on Rockford and Longview. And on Long, on Longview, they're only painted red, and it says, "No parking", Daily City Police. These curb cuts are hard for me when cars park close to them.
Yeah, that's true.
What about the standing limit? What about the poles that you move from the edge of the grass to the sidewalk? Like the stop signs, when I go by them, I have to get close to the curb. And my friend will go to roam my scooter, because my shoulder's already been replaced, because there's no curb cuts in Pacifica. I'm going to court this September for the medi, for the mediation. And I hear nothing but excuses from Shirley Chan, Julie Hughes, who was the assistant manager, and she quit. I hear excuses from Joe, the street division. I hear excuses. I hear excuses from everybody, especially in the curb cut in front of my house, that's full of dirt, and I can barely stand up, and it's always full of water. Why should I have to get my feet wet and shoes wet, or have the debris and the dirt and mud on the curb cut? And when I'm trying to transfer from my wheelchair to the, to my mom's car?
All right, Mr. Jean.
No, I'm serious.
I understand that.
I have a multimillion-dollar lawsuit against Pacifica. If you wanna see pictures, I got pictures on my phone.
All right, you appeared before this council before, and...
Yes, I have.
We recognize and definitely understand the sensitivity of this nature here, and we have put it out for our city manager to follow up with you. And if you haven't heard anything, I apologize, but at the same time, I know this is very, very important. I know you were here last week, and the council went extra long, and you could not get your point across. That is why tonight, rather than hold you up to the two minutes, we gave you an extra minute to present your concerns again. We've heard you, sir, and we will do the best within ADA compliance, as this city has always done in all areas. I'm sorry if you feel that maybe the city's not doing enough, but we are doing what's necessary and legally responsible to do for you, sir.
What about the underpass on Gateway Drive?
Okay.
I told them to put signs up for no littering and stuff, and putting cameras up to catch the person, putting the litter on the furniture on the sidewalks, and all the McDonald wrappers and everything. I got a metal piece in my room that I gave to my attorney, that I rolled over in my scooter. These wheels ain't cheap for this power chair.
All right, sir, I appreciate it.
Already gave a bill to my attorney, they're twelve hundred dollars for those wheels.
All right.
Pacifica has to pay for it.
Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, and we'll take it under submission.
When?
Thank you.
When?
As soon as we can, within the legal limits.
We're gonna do the curb cut in front of my house.
Sir, thank you so much for coming and providing public comment. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see when I go public on the news about Daly City.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I just signaled to Mr. Fuller to please talk with Giovanni on his way out, because we have been trying to address these issues on an ongoing basis, and I know that Mr. Fuller, the last time this issue came up, indicated to me several of the things that we had done. So, John, will you talk to Giovanni and get more information for us to follow?
Just so you know, it became law nineteen ninety-four nationwide.
Thank you, sir. Our Public Works Director would be more than happy to engage with you and continue this matter. Thank you again. All right. Do we have any more cards from the audience?
Me.
Hearing none. Okay, I'd like to move to the next item, and that is appointments. Any appointments to board or commission membership committee appointments, from anyone? All right, hearing none, we'll move to reports. Start with item number nine, council committee. Item A, we had two meetings from council committees, one May twenty-second and June eleventh, and I'll open that up to my colleagues to report in the result of those meetings and what they were.
The library one, we already talked about last time.
For May twenty-second, yes, I recall that.
If you'd like, if you'd like me to talk about June sixth, Mr. Gangona and myself would be happy to talk about that.
Did we get an update on the CDBG Advisory Committee meeting? I know funds were allocated.
That's Ray. And Mike.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, the update is, is that we're still waiting on a CDV allocation, and we had put over that meeting before to determine what they were going to be giving us. The point is, is that we have adapted our CDBG requests to meet those decreases in cuts in funding, and that, my understanding is, Pat, is that other shoe has not dropped yet.
Not at the present time, but I believe it's imminent.
So, so it's gonna be less. So, we needed to anticipate that in our projections, and that's what we did. So, you'll get a follow-up as soon as that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Gangona. Ms. Christensen, did you say you wanted to say something about Bay Shore re-violation?
Yes.
Re-vitalization.
Councilmember Gangona and myself are on the Bay Shore Cow Palace Council Subcommittee, and there is a little bit of an update. There are two new members on the Cow Palace Board that have been put on the Development Committee, and for well more than a decade, the Bay Shore community has hoped and dreamed and prayed for some development on that property that would bring them the life-supporting businesses that we all enjoy, of a grocery store, a bank, you know, the kinds of things that make your life livable. So, we are hopeful at this point that with two new members, and especially having them on the Development Committee, that we will be able to finally make some of those dreams come true. So, at this point, hopes, prayers, wishes, and hopefully, something will move forward. But, just having some new faces, and some new energy, and some new ideas, and a new openness, I think is a very positive step, and we're really looking forward to moving forward with having something happen there.
That's correct.
Do you know, is it public knowledge who the two new members are? Do you know who they are?
Yes, Bill Mack and, what's the other?
Anthony Pantoloni. There are more new members of the board, but these are the new members of the Development...
On the Development Committee.
Development Committee. There are other members that are new as well.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. All right, now, we're still on the, on the item committees, so Vice Mayor, anything from you?
I'm just doing a follow-up. I requested a council committee meeting for the Affordable Housing Committee last meeting, and so if that can be coordinated, I'd really appreciate that. Yeah, I'd like to convene that meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else on the committee meetings?
No, thank you.
All right. I have three. On May twenty-fourth, and again on May thirty-first, I met with Home for All Outreach. And what I would like to report is two to three cities will be selected out of San Mateo for a pilot program to assist these cities in San Mateo, and the opportunity to receive customized technical assistance and a grant to underwrite the cost of new approaches to community engagement in dealing with affordable housing. I'm kinda looking forward to that. Hopefully, Daly City will be chosen. Information has gone out. On the twenty-fifth, I attended Peninsula Clean Energy Committee, and here we discussed the outreach budget and getting the information out. As you all know, Daly City has a one-point-five percent opt-out, which they expect is anywhere from ten to fifteen percent, so they are doing pretty well. They're buying future energies for our power for the future, so I'm very happy to be a part of that. On June seventh, SFO Roundtable. I represent Daly City. I've requested that we convene a community advisory committee, and Mr. Miller in the audience has offered to be on that committee, dealing with jet noise. And I'm happy to also report that San Francisco is now on our board. The supervisor from San Francisco is the representative of the area of San Francisco that is affected the most with jet noise. Daly City, we are affected as well, and we're the largest city in San Mateo County, and I wanna make sure that there's equity upon that committee. And that's it I have for committees. Any other committee announcements? All right, moving ahead to comments. Vice, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, this is comments for city council. Okay, sorry.
Comments for city council?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public know, on May twenty-fifth, along with the mayor, we attended the San Mateo County Jobs for Youth Event, and it was really great to see this program work for all of the San Mateo young people, bridging them to real-life experiences with small businesses. And I thought that was such a great collaboration, and really providing a space for the youth to have this type of experience, mentorship, and also provide a stipend for them. And we were seated with some of, and I think we also provided, Daly City did provide some scholarships, and it was really nice to meet the young people that received those scholarships from our support from Daly City. Also, on May thirtieth, AFT three-two-six-seven, J. Jefferson Elementary School District, and AFT fourteen-eighty-one, to Jefferson Union High School District, hosted an event around restorative justice and equity. The speakers were Dr. Loretta Johnson and our very own councilman, Ray Venimatura, David Vogelstein, and two young adults, Iridian Martinez and Alfredo Olken Jr. and Shaquilla Lee. This dialogue really stems from making sure that there is thoughtful approach around disciplinary actions and more positive behavior intervention around restorative justice. Also, on June fifth, I attended the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, as a voting delegate for the city of Daly City. ABAG's mission is to strengthen cooperation and collaboration among local governments, cities, and counties, to provide innovative and cost-effective solutions to common problems that we all face. They work with local governments around developing and implementing innovative solutions for land use, housing, transportation, environmental issues, and disaster resilience and economic equity. So, what happened at that meeting was there were major structural changes within the organization, with a merge with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. With that, the budget and work program were adopted, and with the small groups, I was happy to hear that there will be continuous support with our staff around ensuring that there is a larger regional planning around land use and the needs of our communities in housing and transportation. On June eighth, I had the opportunity to participate in the promotion and ceremony of Paulus Cities Middle School, and presenting an award to the young people. It was inspiring to see how many youth scholars we had stand up and show how much pride they had in their community, classmates, and school. Last but not least, I'm very excited to hear the update around the RFQs and with the developments, because it's very important to see how we're gonna progress and find more responsible and economic opportunities for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further comments? Okay.
Oh, I have one. Well, actually, several. Just a couple reminders. Business licenses, if you rent one room, or rooms, or a whole entire house, you are required to get a Daly City business license, and this applies to short-term vacation rentals as well. It's real easy, you just come in to the business department, it takes you about ten minutes, and that includes talking to the staff. You're out of here. It's a hundred bucks for your license, and it's something that the law requires. Number two, the weather's getting warmer, not necessarily every day, but mosquito time is coming. So, when you water in the garden, and you've got that little bowl underneath your plants, you can let that water sit there for twenty-four hours to let the plant absorb it, but after that, you better lift and dump, because mosquitoes, that's where they make their home. So, any standing water in your yard, you need to really watch it. Also, it is kitten season.
Yes, it is.
If there, if you have a cat, male or female, you need, and they have not been spayed or neutered, you need to get on that right away. A well-fed cat, female cat, can have two litters of five kittens each a year. One now, and then one later in the season. So, it is your responsibility. Cats can't do it for themselves. You've gotta step up and get your animals spayed and neutered. Now is also the time to open your hearts to the kittens who have been born, who have either been abandoned, or have been dropped off at your local shelter. You can, there's beautiful kittens out there, come on down and get one. And if you want to love a kitten for a short amount of time, but can't really have them for a full lifetime, you can volunteer as a foster parent for kittens. Sometimes they come with the mom cat. It's a wonderful experience. I have four in my living room right now. So, it's time for the humans to step up and support our, our fur-covered friends that can't really help themselves. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen.
Business licenses, mosquitoes, kittens.
Business license.
Something that goes together there, I know it.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I apologize, I forgot one announcement.
Please, please.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to remind the people in the audience and also watching TV that there is a Fair Housing Open House. This will be this Saturday, June seventeenth. It's gonna be at the Geller Park Clubhouse, fifty Wembley Drive, from ten to eleven-thirty a.m. It's really around capturing what is your housing story, and what is your story of living in San Mateo. They're trying to get some qualitative and quantitative analysis on what's going on in, in housing, so just wanted to let the public know. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, I'll move, I have a few. June first, senior citizens group, Bay Shore area. I'm proud to attend their meetings every month, and inform them of the updates in the Bay Shore area as to what's going on there. Also, on that date, I went down to San Mateo County to witness the swearing-in of Basam Mana for Park and Recreation, appointed by Supervisor Dave Canepa, and Sam is also a Daly City resident. On June sixth, I tried to stay involved and attended the Planning Commission meeting here in Daly City. June seventh, as Ms. Miller and Mr. and Mrs. Miller made mention earlier, I attended Cecilia's Restaurant for cancer awareness with Dre and her husband, and again, thank you for what you do, and it was very successful, and it was a pleasure to be there. Thank you, sir. I forgot, I had to leave that night to go to a meeting, right? Oh, I already made mention, that was the airport roundtable meeting, so I had to eat quick. On June eighth, we started, we did something new. I put together a meet and greet the commissioners. We have five commissions here in Daly City, and some of them don't know who each other are. So, we put together a potluck to include training on the Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Order, and about half of them showed up, but it was good, so I'm very happy for that. And as I made mention earlier, Ms. Martell, this morning, took time out of her busy schedule to give a tour to the students from TRP School, to learn about City Hall and the various things, and the role of council members, and everyone. I got three more items I'd like to bring up, and this is gonna be kinda quick before we close. One of the items is I would like to congratulate Ms. Melinda Dart on her retirement from the school district. I don't know how many years she served, quite a few. I don't wanna give away her age, but...
Since nineteen eighty-seven.
Since nineteen eighty-seven, and the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Buena Ventura had the opportunity to attend. I would also like to make mention Commissioner Ray Satori on the Planning Commission. His wife has just went through a difficult surgery, and I want to wish her a full recovery, especially, you know, when you have a family... especially, you know, when you have a family member. It's important to acknowledge and realize how important our family is. Lastly, tomorrow will be the fourth-year anniversary on the Filipino flag-raising ceremony to be held here at City Hall. It will start at 10 o'clock, and we will have, in the Filipino tradition, something is called a miranda. Miranda is like light snacks and drinks. So if you're free, feel free to come by tomorrow at 10 o'clock for the Philippine flag-raising ceremony. All right, are there any other comments from Council?
No.
Move to adjourn?
I have a German memory.
Yes.
Staff update.
Let's see, we got a couple more items, and staff update, Ms. Martell.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I've just distributed to you a memo from me that I'm gonna be speaking from to update you all on the request for qualifications that the city received to develop several former redevelopment agency parcels. For the benefit of the public who may not be as aware as the Council, on March 31st, the city released a request for qualifications to the broad development community for three development parcels that were formerly owned by the redevelopment agency. We cast a wide net to get a variety of developers, commercial developers, hotel developers, and others, to consider the parcels that we have available and to submit a summary of their qualifications that would be considered by the Council to determine who they may want to potentially interview as potential developers for these parcels. We received, at the close of the RFQ process on April 28th, we received a total of eight responses. And I'm gonna briefly go through each of those to give the Council, as well as the public here and those watching at home, a sense of the quality of developers who are interested in Daily City and are interested in these vacant parcels, and which provide us with a great deal of hope that going forward, we are going to have some quality developments that are going to contribute substantially to both diversifying the economic base here in Daily City and contributing to expanding our revenue generation in the city. So as you can see from the memo I've just submitted to you, we did have one developer that submitted qualifications, and that was L.F. George. However, it was not for a specific site, they just provided us with background information about their experience in residential and mixed-use projects and some hotel developments. But they didn't provide us with a concept, which is what the RFQ requested, so that we had a sense of what they would be proposing if they were considered by the Council. And so there was no detail provided in that response, and there was no specific available site that was proposed as a potential project for them. For Site 1, which is at the corner of Unipero Sarah Boulevard and Westlake Avenue, we received, that particular site, it's entitled, at the present time, the zoning for the site allows for the development of about 270,000 square feet of office development in an eight-story building, and an extension of the Phase 1 parking garage at D.C. Station. That's the southernmost parking garage for the existing development. Site 1, as it was previously approved by the Council, is designated as retail and office commercial, and that's consistent with our general plan, and it is zoned for Plan Development 54. We had one submitted by Duggan Sarah Mortuary, and the Duggan family has provided their qualifications for a mortuary concept. It essentially is an expansion of their existing use on the adjacent site with their mortuary to expand it to include a 52,000-square-foot event facility, which incorporates about 13,000 square feet of event space that could be used for banquets, both associated with funerals, as well as being made available to the public and/or potentially even the city for big events, that we might have a use for that much space for dinners and that kind of thing. It also incorporates about 5,600 square feet of office retail and 28,000-plus square feet of parking. This plan, however, is for the north parcel, on the north side of Westlake Avenue. So it's not the parcel on which we have a number of buildings that eventually will be razed in order to develop, it's on the other side of the street. And it is west of the existing Duggans' mortuary. The Duggan family, the proposers, are suggesting that the southern parcel be bifurcated from this particular parcel that they would like to develop on the north side and to have a separate developer to do some kind of a development on the south side of Westlake Avenue. So they're not proposing the entire development site. The second site that is available is 1837 Unipero Sarah Boulevard. That particular site is entitled, and that particular project would consist of a 10-story hotel, up to a 10-story hotel, with 300 rooms and up to 25,000 square feet of meeting and banquet space. Site 2 is designated retail and office commercial pursuant to the city's general plan, and it is consistent with that. So the exciting news for us, given how long we have waited for a potential hotel development on this site since the economy went sour on us back in 2008 and '09, we have four potential developers who submitted qualifications for a hotel. The first developer is Majestic Hotel, AF Canta. They have provided their qualifications to develop a hotel, and their conceptual plan for a 200-room, approximately, these are just sort of broad concepts, these are not projects, they're just broad concepts. This would be a 200-room boutique hotel with amenities that include 4,000 square feet of an outdoor heated pool area, about 4,200 square feet for food and beverage space, a rooftop bar, a wellness studio, and retail shops that would be incorporated in this boutique hotel.
Pat, do you know, I know that the Owani Hotel is called the Majestic, do you know if they're related in any way?
I don't know that, no. We certainly, if they are, we'll find out by the time the Council interviews them. The second developer is the Ayers Hotel, and they offered their qualifications to potentially construct, they had a limited concept plan for a 200-room boutique hotel with a variety of amenities. However, to really develop their concept, they would like to wait until they have an opportunity to interview with the Council and to get a sense of what the Council's vision is for that hotel site, to fill in more details regarding their concept. The third developer was ICAP Rate Hotel, which offered their qualifications and a concept for a 300-room hotel, including up to 25,000 square feet of conference and banquet space on that site. And the final developer who submitted qualifications was Cooper Hotel. They have outlined a concept plan for a 150-room, potentially a brand hotel, a Marriott or a Hilton brand, including meeting rooms and banquet facilities. So I think you can see from those potential developers and the qualifications that they have all provided that indicate that they are quite capable of doing what they have conceived of for that site. It's pretty exciting news for us about a hotel being constructed there in the future. The third site is up on Mission Street, it's 6401 Mission Street, and for those who aren't familiar, it's the little vacant, well, it's not little, but it's relative to 88 Hillside, the apartment complex up on Mission.
Triangle.
It's a triangle piece at the very northern end of that site, and we received a couple of qualified developers who offered a concept for, now remember, the zoning for this property is for an office building with ground-floor retail. It was envisioned when the Council talked about a future development of that site, that it could be a seven-story, 75,000-76,000-square-foot building. A developer would have to make improvements to and expand the parking garage, because there would be shared parking between whatever the commercial development is on that triangular parcel and the parking provided for the residents and the commercial space in 88 Hillside, on the ground floor at 88 Hillside. This particular site is designated as commercial mixed-use, and it is Zoned PD 59 for Plan Development. So, the first set of qualifications were received from Northeast Medical Services, and the concept plan that was proposed by Northeast Medical Services was for a 30,000-square-foot medical outpatient facility, including 30 medical examination rooms, eight dental operatories, an optometry clinic, a 2,400-square-foot pharmacy, a 3,500-square-foot radiology clinic, and dedicated space on-site for laboratory and health education, and about 8,000 square feet of retail shops. NEMZ is a nonprofit organization whose clinic will serve those facing financial and cultural barriers for healthcare. This is an exciting concept in that it offers the potential to bring to Daily City quite a few new jobs, as well as the development of this particular space. It's consistent with what we're liking to see in Daily City with an expansion of medical services available to residents in close proximity to their homes. I know that the Council is aware that, I sit on the Seton Medical Center Board of Directors, and NEMZ has been working very collaboratively with Seton Medical Center to expand services to those in need and to reach a larger number of people here in the North County region. So this has the potential of providing much-needed medical services for the entire North County. The second set of qualifications we received was from Equity Residential. As the Council may recall, they are the owners of 88 Hillside. So this is adjacent to their property. They offered their qualifications and provided a concept description of an eight-story project that would include about 95 to 115 total apartment units. So they are proposing residential on this site. They would also offer ground-floor retail and commercial and the parking extension that would be required for any development on this site. Since they own the adjacent mixed-use development, they are familiar with the need for expanded retail and commercial activity in this particular location. Although housing development was never envisioned for this parcel, if the Council at some future date wants to consider that, you certainly can interview both of those potential developers and determine what might best meet the needs of the city. So, what are the next steps? Well, since eight is a pretty reasonable number of potential developers to interview, the staff and I are recommending that the City Council interview all of these qualified developers and to get a sense of who they are as a development team, get a little more information about their development concepts. So we would work with Cosmont and Associates, who have been working with us on this RFQ process, and develop a series of questions for an interview process that the Council would be directly involved in. And the questions would be based on developing more information for us to then begin to narrow down the Council's consideration of the potential developers in order to be able to select one, in order for us to be able to enter into negotiations for the exclusive rights to develop those sites. So I'm proposing that we have a study session in which we interview all of the proposed developers, and the dates that we're looking at right now would be either July 31st or August 2nd. And I will get back to the Council based on your own schedules and the schedules of the developers, because we wanna bring them in all at the same time, to let you know what I think will work best for everyone. So at the point that the Council would begin the interview process and ultimate selection process, you would be looking at the developer responses and trying to evaluate several different things. One, their experience. Does the proposed development team possess the necessary experience to really make a project happen for the targeted sites that they're looking at? Do they have experience with similar kinds of projects? Are they familiar with the nearby markets, and have they worked in the nearby markets so they know what would work on these sites? Are each of their team members experienced in the various aspects of development? Have they been involved in any litigation on projects that they've worked on? So those are the kinds of things that you would wanna explore when you interview them. In addition, with respect to the concept, does the concept that's being proposed meet the city's vision? Now, obviously, the Council previously has entitled these sites and had a vision for what they wanted to see there. Because we have had an additional proposal from the Duggans' family that doesn't quite match exactly what the proposed vision was for the Site 2 on, excuse me, Site 1, excuse me. It doesn't mean that the Council cannot make a decision to move in that direction if you feel that that best meets the needs of the community. So that's something that will have to be explored, is to, what are the uses? How do they meet the vision of the city, and how well it will address needs in the community? Another very important aspect of the Council's evaluation of these proposals will be the proposed developers' access to capital, because obviously, having the necessary financing in place in order to do these developments will be extremely important. These are private sites, so there's no city funding involved, they're no longer redevelopment sites, the city cannot offer funding for these kinds of commercial projects, so they'll have to demonstrate their financial viability to move forward with these projects and to complete them. We'd also be looking at past history of their financing capability, as well as checking references with regards to the strength of their capital financing. And finally, the overall responsiveness that the developers have provided in terms of the RFQ document itself, in which we outlined what we were looking for, what we were hoping to, what kind of impact we want, you know, to expand revenue generation, create a more diverse economic base in the community. So how responsive are their proposals to those kinds of criteria? So, following the initial interviews in a study session, then it would be up to the Council to make a final selection, and there would be additional factors that would then be introduced at that point in time. So we would rely on information that we would solicit from each of the proposed developers in the form of a letter of intent, which provides more specificity to what they are proposing, how they would do that. They would have to provide a financial structure, they would have to provide project valuation for us, so we could see what's the overall cost of this project, and how are they... cost of this project, and how are they going to be able to fund that. They'd have to develop a pro forma for us to demonstrate that they could financially make it happen and that there would be a reasonable profit for them, but that they could meet all of the criteria for development. We'd also look at supportive market data to see if what they're proposing is something that we have a market for that will make the project successful. And then also, of real importance to the community, is the quality of the design. We obviously want, these are real landmark sites for us, and so we want a strong physical statement in the community with these developments. So what they propose in terms of the design and the development is going to be very important, and how well it fits into the community. And then finally, which of course is always top on my list, the financial impact of these kinds of developments, and what kind of revenue generation that they will provide for us in the long term, because these are sites that we are going to be relying on to help to improve our overall fiscal situation. So that concludes my update to you on this process. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Any, Adam Christensen?
I'm assuming under quality of design, that's not only the look, but also would green building and LEED certification come under that?
All of those things, yes.
Yeah. I know for a number of us, that's important.
Any other? Ms. Martel, I guess you kind of answered my question that pays to wait until the end, but I had a question on Site Number 1. And I guess as, following the in-person interviews, the city council, we may also change the current designation of the land, right?
Certainly within the council's purview to be able to do that, yes.
Thank you so much. I would like to...
And if you were to do that, I might add, it doesn't mean that the other site would not get developed. We would have to just reexamine that particular site and determine, with a different configuration and maybe not the expanded parking that we envisioned on the north side of Westlake Avenue, what could we potentially develop on that site with only available parking on that site?
Great. I also want to make mention, this was definitely long overdue. This is excellent news, and I thank you and your staff for moving forward on the redevelopment land that has been sitting and languishing. It's really good, and it's very, very optimistic for our city, Ms. Martel, and thank you so much for a very comprehensive report. All right. Last item we have is the adjournment, and I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Mr. Gangona.
Thank you very much. If anybody grew up in Daly City, you'd know the Banfield family. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Charlie Banfield Jr. Charlie graduated from Jefferson High School in 1980, 37 years ago. I've known him since I was 14 years old. He wrestled at Jefferson High School and was in the class of 1982 at Skyline, his college. He was my teammate for a couple of years at Skyline. Charlie is survived by his wife Linda and his sons Joshua and Justin. I lost contact with Charlie for a number of years, and then I saw him on the island of Molokai in 2000. And we were just waking up to start a race from Molokai to Oahu, a 40-mile canoe race, and it turns out that he was on another team in San Jose, and I was on a team in San Francisco. And then we rekindled our friendship on the water, and were able to travel to places like Tahiti and Hawaii and compete in age-group canoe racing competitions. So he was a real sponsored athlete, a sponsored Masters athlete, a great guy. He succumbed to cancer just recently. He fought valiantly for a number of months and will be missed by everyone that's ever come in contact with him. Memorial service is on next Saturday at Holy Spirit Church, 12 noon in Fairfield. So those of you who have known him from the community, you know, he will be missed. I will miss him. Charlie was a great guy, real hard worker, great athlete, great father, great friend.
Thank you, Mr. Gangona. Gone too soon. Please accept our condolences. With that being said, if we can have a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned.